...2018 will please come to order and the clerk will call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Tuma, Mr. Tuma is absent at the moment, Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schrein.
Here.
Ms. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones is absent at the moment, Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Council President Brady.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody signed in for public comment?
No, Mr. Chair, no one has signed in.
Okay, thank you. We have two presentations today. The first part is that we're going to wrap up the quarterly update with the administration and I would ask the administration to make a presentation which summarizes the financial information on the project and the return on investment information and then we're going to do a single round of questions. I want to remind everybody that ZIG's report is long, complex, and meaty and we want to spend most of our time on that and we need to be done about 12:30 so that we have a little bit of a break before the very important discussion on the anti-discrimination legislation. So we want to do this first part relatively quickly and move on to ZIG's report. Please proceed.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. My name is Jim Hay. I'm the Deputy CIO with Cuyahoga County and I will be briefing my comments to allow a little bit of time for questions. And recognizing that both of my topics here are continuous works in progress that will continually update you on in our monthly reports and frankly anytime you've an interest and time to sit down with us.
Are we going to be able to show the slides?
This was our summary table which was presented in your June report which was delivered July 9th to council staff. This was some, a copy of some recent updates and in fact this has even changed as I was updating our forecast this morning. The important thing about this is we talk about re-baselining our plans and it's not only the work and the scheduling and the resources but the budgets and the forecasts have to be aligned to all that as well. So we're in the process of aligning all of these things and as we do, this continually evolves and beneath this is a detailed month-by-month analysis and capture of everything, not only that we have under contract but that we anticipate needing and when we need it and that's what we put in our forecast. From a June perspective, and we were able to catch up on a number of invoices, so our actuals in June appear to be spiking but it's actually catching up for both May and June. Council was good enough to approve an appropriation on May 29th and it took some time to get the funds certified out to the contract level and at that point we can pay invoices. So we take your appropriations of the 25 million total, roughly 16 million and change at this point and we kind of hold those out there when we put them on to the contracts as we anticipate activity against the contracts so that we keep good control over it. But our forecasts really talk from the time it's appropriated down through what we expect to spend even though it might not even be under contract yet. The impacts of the schedule changes will obviously affect our forecast. We are synchronizing as you heard on Monday, our county plans and the NFOR plans by month end and we anticipate that we'll have a change order with which we can begin negotiations within for as to what the financial impact of some of our schedule changes will be and we'll have more information on that as soon as it's available to council. It's not just NFOR, of course. We have some other external staffing that we are looking at extending some of the individuals we recently added such as Jack, Mr. Rhine, who you met Monday, as well as additional roles which we've not been successful filling on a permanent basis but that we're bringing in now on a consulting basis to help out our business partners to prepare for the testing effort that's coming up in the next two quarters. Just a quick note on the benefits modeling. Obviously, our financial forecast is the cost side. We're looking at the benefit side now, put both pieces together into their, the cornerstones of a return on investment analysis which we'll be preparing for the county. So we've, what we've done so far is we've been able to identify the benefits buckets and we've looked at both hard benefits and soft benefits in our analysis so that we can present a full picture to council and you can help us determine what's an appropriate quantification or qualification of those types of benefits. We are looking through our core departments right now. Human Resources, Public Works, and IT have drafted their benefits models. Fiscal is working on theirs but we're also beginning to extend that out into other departments and areas such as Health and Human Services as one of the main procurers is going to experience a number of benefits in their operations as well. So we're looking to capture those as well.
No questions at all? We're going to let him finish.
Yeah. The, this just for reference, in the June report, Zico Consulting, ZIG was able to share with you kind of this framework. That's sort of the framework we're working under as well. Again, this is just for reference and this is kind of a summary view of where we're at today. I apologize, it's a little hard to see on the screen but I hope you all have printed copies still to go by. And that would conclude the executive's presentation for the second quarter and I'm open to questions.
Okay, we're open to questions and Councilman Schrein is first.
Just one question. I'm thrilled that we are now working on the benefits of spending $25 million. Do you think that the appropriate time to identify the benefits was when this project was being considered and those identified by departments as to what they think they might achieve as opposed to now just kind of drafting these things two years into the project and $16 million invested?
Um, sir.
That's a yes or no question. Sorry about that. I don't want to be that cold but should those questions have been asked at the beginning of this thing or is this the time to be asking them?
In some methodologies you would, it depends on the methodology you select that you would do a more formal business case and ROI planning upfront. I have been with the county since March of 2017 so I don't know what was done back in 2014 when the RFP was issued and subsequently what was done since it was awarded in terms of understanding that this investment is critical to the county and will pay us back. I can tell you where we're at now is that it's looking pretty good.
Okay, I guess I didn't get a yes or no out of that.
I'm going to defer to answer, sir, because I wasn't here but.
No, I didn't say was it done, should it be done?
Going forward, I would say yes, sir, it should be done.
Should have been done. Thank you.
Other questions? I have one question as to whether you can give us an estimate on whether we, when we would have a reasonably complete return on investment profile that's quantified.
We're working through those now and I'm hoping that we complete an initial model in August. Again, as we learn more and more about what this system can do for us, we're going to continue to, number one, validate the benefits we told you we were expecting are materializing and number two, are there more benefits that we missed that have surfaced? So I anticipate this being more of a continual effort or reporting effort with council.
So you expect we'd have a somewhat complete quantified benefits analysis in the August report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who requested? Ms. Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Going back to the change order that you indicated back on slide 27, with a six-month delay which I believe is what we're looking at, do you have any estimated guess as to what we can anticipate that estimate to be and what we can anticipate we would need to budget in order to cover the delay?
We're hopeful that we're within the $25 million in total that's been appropriated. It would be premature of me to provide a range in advance of NFOR's analysis which is underway and as soon as we have it, you will have it.
So if I'm understanding, when you come back, you think at least we will be within the $25 million that was originally the cost of the project and even though we're delayed six months, we're still going to be within that same range of $25 million?
That's our plan and that's our hope at this time. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I have a question.
Anything else, Ms. Simon?
Just a quick question. So if in fact this may come up short, I mean, or it extends beyond the 25, what if any plans are you and your team considering to make up for the shortfall?
There are a number of things that we keep and try to keep in balance as I mentioned briefly at the outset. Your scope of your work, the resources that you're using, and the schedule. Should we run into some problems, certainly we would have the option to defer some of the less critical modules to the county and bring those in-house to be done. Our team continues to evolve not only in IT but across the business units, learn more and more about the power of this platform. So I anticipate at some point we'll begin to be able to ramp down external dependencies from NFOR and all of our other consultants that we're using. So if we do look to approach or risk the 25 million mark, we'll have plenty of lead time to react and adjust schedules and staffing. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Baker?
Just to follow up, given the challenges that we've had with the ERP system and the change of leadership and things aren't going as, at least as timely as we thought, how can we still be within the $25 million estimate given the costs that had to be incurred in order to keep what we're doing now on task? It's hard to understand how we're going to be six months into the next year and still be within the $25 million. I just, I guess I just don't want any surprises that this is going to cost us more and it's hard to understand how we're not over budget now let alone still stay within budget six months into the next year. Can you explain how you're able to regain the resources to be able to continue staying within the original budget?
Yes, ma'am. May I ask you to pull the slide presentation back up on the monitor? Thank you. The original program budget off to the far left did include some contingencies and I would draw your attention actually to two numbers. The first being, there's a small line there that kind of reads across to the 2018 line. It says funds still available for reallocation and a couple of lines below that, there is a contingency line. So that fund available for reallocation is what's changing monthly. If you go back and look at that from your monthly reports month over month, as we find we need some other resources in one area but not in another area, things get adjusted and netted out. We then look to also work with NFOR on the revised schedule because their deliverable list is going to change and we anticipate having some net gain in what we are asking them to do. It's going to be an increase but that's going to be offset somewhat by some other work that won't be done. Plus, we have those two items there that we'll be able to manage within and stay within our overall program budget. That's why I don't feel we're over budget today even with the delays we've experienced. We've made some good progress and we've got a good plan going forward. We're not out of the woods but we're in much better shape than in March when Chief Young and I had, I came in to start helping out. And you know, our TPA, RSM, and ZIG have been instrumental in helping us make sure we focus on the right things to get this done. Beyond that, as I was just speaking with Councilperson Simon, that if we get into late this year, early next year, we feel that we might be running into things, we'll assess where we are internally and as soon as we can start bringing more things in-house, we will because that will save taxpayer money overall anyway. But, so we do have some plans, some options should we need them.
A contingency is typically an amount of money that you put aside when the project begins, then in case you run into some obstacles that are unforeseen, you have money to fall back on. But your contingencies are a different contingent. Your money is money that is saved through different ways of saving perhaps labor or outsourcing or whatever it is that we are able to come up with money outside of the $25 million that wasn't anticipated. That's, that word contingency is different than the contingency that's usually used for projects. This is more of a savings within the project that we're able to put aside to use for things that we didn't think we would need it for but now we have. Is that, I mean, maybe the word contingency isn't the best word to use for moving forward and using dollars within the $25 million for unexpected things that came up that pushes us now six months later. That I just, you know, there was a time and I know it wasn't your time that we were told contingency costs were gone. There was no contingency and now we're seeing that word come back again but I don't think it's in the same context as you would consider a contingency to be. Can you elaborate on that?
I can provide you my current understanding and I'll take an action item to go back with the chiefs that are involved and make sure that I'm not misstating anything but the contingency from within savings that you talked about within the program, I would equate that to the line that's budget available for other program needs. So that's the number that fluctuates as we find where we're able to save some money in one place but we need to use some in another place and so you'll see that number move up and down. The number, two rows below that was my understanding of the more traditional and conventional definition of the word contingency on a program that was, that is available and set aside. Our business manager, Janelle Green, and I researched everything we could back in the March-April timeframe when we were constructing this schedule, this forecast of month over month through 2019. And so we, what we were able to find and substantiate was that contingency, 2 million plus contingency buckets still out there which would be a more traditional or conventional use of the term. Does that help?
Just to understand, so that 2 million that you're pointing to should not go up? We should not see that contingency line go up?
No, ma'am. That's, if you tap into that, you've exhausted everything else for any issue.
All right, thank you.
I, yes, ma'am.
I would also point out that the original project plan included some stuff that was later determined to be operating and this was backed out and this created some additional money within the project but at the expense of also creating some additional general fund operating cost.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Simon.
Just quickly, I know we're under some time constraints. I just want to say thank you for trying to get this project back on track. I mean, from my perspective, sitting here from the beginning, is it went off rails because of past leadership and I appreciate what's being done now to try to get it back on track and your ability and willingness to work with ZIG and of third-party oversight. So I'm hoping that relationship amongst you will enable this to move forward and I just want to recognize an attempt to get it back on track and I see that you're doing that.
Yeah.
I hope it'll be fruitful but I want to say at least I appreciate this.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, thank you very much. And as ZIG is coming forward, I'll note that Scott Tuma has joined the meeting, been here a little bit. And we are now going to proceed to ZIG's report. It's a long report. We're not going to be able to get through the full report without breaking for questions so from time to time, I will call for a break and we'll take a round of questions. Please proceed. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity. This is, this is the monthly report. It's actually the quarterly presentation for this past quarter and as I have been doing, I try to give you some good news up front, okay? So the major, major things as far as good news are concerned is that the asset management, the enterprise asset management work is continuing as scheduled, as planned, which is all the work order activities for Public Works and they are moving along just great. I mean, there are the hiccups and all that other sort of thing but they are meeting their rolled-out schedules and it's doing quite well. Fleet Division is going to go up at the end of the month. That's only 12 people, I think, round figure, round number. And then Facilities will be rolled out over the next couple of months and that is moving forward and they will be adding some more tablets. And the major change that's happening in Public Works is that the folks in the field are now using tablets to process, to enter and process work orders which is a tremendous savings and a positive aspect and everybody in the field seems to be really appreciating that. The re-baselining for Fiscal, I think, was important. It was good. It was, you know, it's, at least, you know, the team recognized that there were some issues. They weren't going to be able to start on schedule with regard to testing so let's do a realistic plan and that's exactly what they have done. And I think the other thing that's happening is that the Fiscal team is doing, is guiding in for the vendor a little bit more rather than the other way around. So that makes an awful lot of sense. I think it's good news that we have had some benefits provided to us in addition to IT and Public Works. We now have some benefits from HR. We still need Fiscal benefits. There's a positive restructuring going on. The payroll responsibility which was in the HR work stream has now been moved to Fiscal. Makes sense. The other thing that's happening is that there's a payroll work stream team meeting every week. That makes sense. There also is now a weekly workforce management team meeting every week and that makes sense so that we can keep motion, keep pace of the project and those particular areas are very crucial that they, that they keep moving because they are looking at a, we're starting payroll at the end of December and workforce management is the timekeeping. So that's the component that has to be there in order for payroll to be realistic and to move forward. The other thing that, you know, the last point there, I was told that we are looking for a full-time payroll resource to be working on the payroll team. Apparently, some interviews have been taking place and they're looking at having that person start within a very short period of time. So that's also good news. Last month, I presented to you a payback model to try to show how you can start looking at the overall results of what you spent on this $25 million project and what you achieve and receive as benefits and then when in essence you're going to actually pay it back, okay? This needs to be updated. I mean, this model, it does not have all the effects of the reschedule so that cumulative cost line will rise, okay? Not a lot in relationship to what you're seeing here but it will rise. And same thing with benefits. Since we don't have the rest of HR, we don't have fiscal benefits, we don't have HHS benefits, that line will rise as well. So, but given the fact that both of them will be rising, I would imagine the payback period will still be about what you're seeing which is about seven years, okay? So what's the condition of the project? Basically, the project over the last quarter stalled slightly. It wasn't able to maintain project pace. Things fell behind. And what are the reasons? Well, there were several changes in leadership. There were a lot of delays in the review of the deliverables and so NFOR kept putting some deliverables out there and kept waiting and we're, I showed you some examples of 30 days and 40 days. I mean, when it, it should be five, okay? There was a lot of confusion off and on in various work streams as to who's responsible for what. That has, I think, solidified and of course, we all understand and know that there was also confusion about who's in charge. So we went through that Monday. But some of the reasons why things kind of stalled and slowed down, county was supposed to provide resources. I think I've talked about this several times, that we needed to step up to the plate, we needed to get resources allocated in the project. That's happening. It just happened a little slowly over the last quarter. In terms of the backfill, we had budgeted numbers for backfill. The actions to actually do the backfills were slow. I think it's ramping up now. The people are, there's, literally, we're starting to see, like that payroll resource, we're starting to see that kind of thing happening now. And then the NFOR themselves had some difficulty in staffing up for workforce management. They had a visa problem with the individual and, well, the first individual had to be replaced. Things like that were going on. So that actually slowed down workforce management which is why NFOR in their weekly progress reports kept talking about it as being red. From their NFOR reports, they highlight, you know, some of the items that are red, that are in a red condition, that are concerns. And this is just simply a restatement, a quick restatement of what kinds of things they are thinking are, are causing a concern with regard to schedule. So the first one, you know, the first one is all about roles and responsibilities. Those are important so that you can identify the security and the access in the system and you need to have the security and the access of the system in order to run testing, okay? And also to establish segregation of duties. So two very important activities. So it seems to me like people are trying to be too perfect. They're, you know, let's, let's get going. Let's get, you know, it can't be hard to say, here are all the people that work in my department and here's what they do. I mean, but they're trying to be perfect and they're, and they're very concerned about, you know, well, do I have to change job descriptions and am I going to have to get reviews and approvals, you know, and all those kinds of things are going on. And really, we're talking about responsibilities with regard to how you use the system, okay? So that's slowed things down and NFOR keeps saying, we can't go forward until we get them. So that sort of thing is happening right now. And that's probably the major one. So then the other thing, and this is again, from the NFOR status report, and they put out a weekly status report and this is, they list, you know, what are the deliverables and when are, when are the reviews supposed to be done? And the first thing that surprised me, there aren't even any scheduled dates for when the reviews are supposed to be done. Strikes me that that would be a very important thing to do. Say, if the review is supposed to be done five days from the point in time that NFOR gives it to you, then five days hence, there ought to be a date in here. Should be pretty straightforward. It's not happening. And of course, the red ones are the ones that are relatively long and NFOR is basically saying, hey, 30 days, 40 days, really? That's an example. They, there's a major deliverable with regard to Fiscal which NFOR talks about in their weekly status report which is important and, and I think they highlight, okay, what percent complete is it? And the good news is that they're saying that the scripts are 95% complete. That's good news. The hooker here is that that's on what used to be called Part One of Fiscal, okay? Part Two of Fiscal hasn't been started yet and integrated system testing is starting in the beginning of September. The scripts for Part Two need to be done for that as well. So just kind of a highlight there. So what's the situation? You know, the, basically, the team recognized it wasn't going to meet the schedule which was an aggressive schedule to start with Fiscal in, on Labor Day, okay? So that's, that's what got moved. So once they began examining the amount of work, they combined the two pieces of Fiscal which meant that they were doing everything at once and moved it all out six months from Labor Day, okay, to 2019. Everybody is focused tremendously on, let's make sure we get open enrollment working because current open enrollment doesn't work. Got to have it, got to have it. And they are working very hard to make that happen. But that's on a critical path now, all right? That's on a critical path. Integrated system testing for HR benefits which has to be in place for open enrollment to work, for people to be able to log in and change their, you know, marital status or whatever the case may be. That starts in August. That starts in August. That's only 10 days away. Okay? So people are pretty serious about that effort right now. And payroll is still being targeted for the end of the year. So they haven't changed their target dates for benefits or for payroll, simplistically put. The tough part here is that workforce management has to be in place as well. That's the one that is a little bit late right now. And if that continues to be late, if they can't make that up, you're going to find payroll get pushed. Okay? So the schedule outlook, just recapping, fiscal component is targeted for 3/31/19 or 4/1. Depends on how you like to look at it. And that's moving part one and part two. So those two dates I have in there are for Labor Day for part one and for the end of the year for part two. HR benefits is the same, end of, end of September, early, early October. DEPM, which is the budget preparation capability, you know, the plan says 3/31/19. My information from OBM says that they're going to start generating budgets for 2020 and 2021 in the June timeframe. And the reason that I think this is important is because we've got, the team has got to make a decision as to when are you going to train all the departments on how to enter budgets? I don't think you want to do it in the beginning of the year. You might want to do it in May and June, right before they do it. That's not in the plan. Probably should be. Okay? Payroll and workforce management, still planned for the end of the year. Expense management and contract and learning management, talent management, the second half of it, have all been pushed into 2019 at the, all the way out to the end of, end of July. Okay? And then workforce management, work order management, as I've said, just continues to roll along. In essence, at the end of September, round numbers, you're going to have all of EAM in place and in production. Okay? That's good news. So the spend outlook.
Before we move on to the spend outlook, we're going to stop for our first break, noting Vice President Jones is now with us. Any questions from my colleagues on what we've heard so far? Councilman Schron.
You had indicated that they review deliverable sign-offs. The dates were not in there as far as what the timeline in for was asking for it. We were agreeing we're going to sign off, but the date to which we were going to sign off has not been, is not in there. Has the individual who has the ultimate responsibility for the sign-off been identified?
Well, that can only be presumed that the person who fills that out would be the in for project manager. And so, and I really don't know why he would not put plus five days in there. I, I don't know. He should.
But are the reviews you're talking about, those are only done by, by in for in a vacuum? Or are they done in concert with our folks?
The reviews are done by county personnel.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the date to which they've given us five days or whatever, we haven't, we haven't actually said how many days. It sounds like it's blank on, on this spreadsheet.
That's correct.
Is the name of the person who ultimately is supposed to be doing it, has that been identified on the review?
Yes, that is included. I just simply did not repeat it.
That's, that's fine. I just want to make sure at least we have the name.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then when you were talking about the open enrollment aspects and your, your concerns about the underlying data points for the plans. And, and I kind of was asking that of the, of the director the other day. And I was asking him if he knew how many plans we had. And it was, he was kind of stumbling a little bit to, to even identify what our, what our plans are that we offer to our employees. But anyway, we'll leave that. Is this also going to be for all the plans for all of our county employees? Do they use, are these plans the same ones that are being utilized by the court system, by the Board of Elections, by all of the other county employees that are identified as county?
Simplistically, and I'm not aware of what minor exceptions there may be, but simplistically, all 8800, all 8800 employees that are being paid by the county are also in the benefit program.
And how fused are they or do they appear to be fused into this, this process of the training and all the things that was alluded to by the director the other day?
There is, there is a plan, a training plan for training people how to use open enrollment. Absolutely.
To include all the folks who are not in this building?
Going to have to key in.
Okay.
I mean, what the method is and all that, I'm not sure I, I know that. I would imagine it's going to be online. I would imagine it's going to be web-based, but that's the way I would do it.
Okay. And then on the talent management side of the aisle, that means that we are, I mean, just the other day, we had an economic development about talent management and workforce, that we're going to launch this two and a half million dollar program. And we're saying that our talent management is not going to get reviewed until July of next year. I'm just.
Just for clarification purposes, I mean, there's, there's a module that in for provides that the county has obtained, which is called talent management. It's actually two pieces. The first one is acquisition of talent. That's going up along with the rest of benefits by the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay? Talent management in terms of, you know, how's everybody doing and which training classes have they conducted? And all that kind of thing is a backend piece and that's what they've moved off.
Thank you.
Shall I go on?
Vice President Jones has a question.
Zig, can you repeat? You mentioned there was a 10-day deadline coming up for.
Getting started on integration system testing for HR.
Right. Could you kind of reiterate it again and tell us, is it doable? Is it, is it possible to make it in this 10-day time limit?
Well, they, they're, the team has not raised a flag yet. Okay? Now, the last time they raised a flag was the beginning of fiscal integrated system testing, which was to be 6/11. If you recall, the one week before, they raised the flag and said, we give up. They haven't raised the flag yet. They are generally, everybody I've talked to is very positive about being able to start a HR integration system testing on 8/3, whatever the Monday is, 8/3, 8/4, something like that. So I don't, I don't, I, I certainly see risks. I certainly see areas that, you know, could cause a problem. I think, you know, specifically, you'll see later, I, I have recommended that, that, you know, the, the county is paying for a third-party assessor, you know, which is RSM, and is paying them for readiness assessment before every testing cycle. I mean, they're paying them for that. So it seems to me like they ought to be listening, paying attention, responding and saying, okay, if you identify some areas of risk, what are we going to do to mitigate those risks?
What is that person's name?
RSM McGladyry. It, it, it's a, it's a consulting firm, accounting firm, actually. And then they have a consulting branch and they're the ones that are actually contracted to do this throughout the life of the project. So they're, they are actually doing these reports and reporting to the executive steering committee, I think, on a monthly basis.
Who in the administration is managing that particular concern?
They report to Earl, the Chief of Staff. But I think the contract management is, is, is by the IT department. So that would be Mike Young and Jim Hay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilman Schron.
Is McGladyry producing a written report?
RSM does provide a, a report that you got an extract of their report in the quarterly report that was presented on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there. We're going to talk about that, by the way.
Thank you.
By the way, Zig's next report to us will be on Monday, August 6th, which is presumably the date for the HR IST rollout. So that should be an interesting day. Please proceed.
Sure. So a little bit about the spend outlook, you know, I think we, basically the, the in for contract is about nine and a half million dollars. It will have to be amended. There, there's no question that you're going to go over the nine and a half million dollars. Okay? And that means it's going to come to you, should come to you. In order to, to continue their services, however, there may need to be some type of a change order that goes against the existing contract. And there's still room in that contract for spend. So don't be surprised to see a change order as well. The, the, there are contracted people, and I think, you know, Jim referred to, to Jack Ryan. There are several contracted people, six or seven that are under the mainsail contract. And they are brought in under the in for umbrella because in for is supposed to provide a small business component. And so that's the piece that, that's there. But the, the life of that, that mainsail contract is six months. Almost all those people started two months ago, which means that they're going to run out in November, December. So clearly, I mean, if you want Jack Ryan to continue as an example, to continue as a project manager for fiscal, you're going to have to extend that contract. Okay? Yeah, I'd like to be extended too, if the project goes longer because my funding will, will, will run out in, in about January. Project Leadership is confident the impending contract changes will not exceed the $25 million authorization. I agree with that. I have some caveats and we'll talk about those. Okay? So what's the effect of baselining? I, I tried to show a trampoline here because in essence, the baselining gave, gave everybody on the team kind of a leg up to get over the bar. Okay? That's really what was happening. So that's what that's all about. This is their original, from June, their overall schedule. Okay? This is, this has, this is what they, what they presented. I continue to say, I really would like to know the progress that everybody has on this bar, on these bars. And they don't do that. I mean, so, but, you know, certainly that big red arrow is there to say, here's today. And the question is, where are we? You know, are we ahead or behind that bar? Are we ahead of schedule, behind schedule? Okay? So that was, that's theirs. Then this is the new one. Okay? This is now the one that they presented to you on Monday. And it was also in the month-end report. And you can see that fiscal is a much longer line now. It goes out quite a ways. You can also see that contracts and so forth are pushed all the way out to the end of July. And that there is little or no change to the top section, which is the blue. That's, that's enterprise asset management, that's public works, and that's running along just fine. You can see those green bars, they're pretty close to being done, which is, which is accurate. That's good. What we don't know is whether or not fiscal is ahead or behind. So I don't know their position. They're not reporting it. And then you see, you see all of the HR ones, which are in the turquoise down below. Okay? I have an interesting sidebar for you, and that was I looked at the core team presentation draft document that was presented at 10 o'clock today. They were using the old one. I, I didn't understand that. Net effect on the schedule. So good news, I'm repeating myself, so I'll kind of go quickly here. The target dates for enterprise asset management remain unchanged. Fiscal part one, and I'm listing for you the pieces of that, which was supposed to go live in September. That's general ledger, AP cash, treasury management projects. It's pushed out six months. Okay? Now, there's a complication about that, that I will talk about in just a minute because these things start getting confusing. Part two, which was assets, grants, AR and billing, that, that's only delayed three months because it was supposed to go in at the end of the year. All right? But they're going to go in together. That was the plan. Enterprise performance management, which is called DEPM. They're really treating it like a pilot now. So they're going to try to get it in, let OBM work with it and play with it, and then get serious mid-year. Contract strategic sourcing is pushed out five months. Expense management's delayed six months. And then the good news is HR target dates are still the same. That is, if workforce management continues to, can catch up. Project governance, I just wanted to show you, this is the chart that you all saw Monday. Well, after the conversation Monday, I realized there's still a lot of lines on here, but presumably this is what you're expecting, that, that there is now a very specific individual, Michael Young, who is the project director, I called him that. Those are solid, hard lines of responsibility going to the three teams and with the three project managers. You'll notice that I, I'm suggesting that the PMO group basically gets moved off as an advisory group. It's not in the management line, it's advisory. Okay? The other thing I found interesting, if you go, if we go back one, this is, to the right, we see the list of the people who are on the project management office. What I found interesting is that the project manager for in for is not in that group. Not in that group. I mean, the purpose of that group is to have the project managers together. So it seems to me like they should probably replace, and I say this up here, you should probably take that client executive who was in that group and move him up to the executive steering committee and put the in for project manager in that group. And then I've shown some very light dotted lines here. The intent is to try to show that the chiefs still give directional input to their people. So it's still going to be there. I'm not sure you can get around that. So let's talk a little bit about critical path elements. So needless to say, the message here is if something falls over in a set of dominoes, they all start going. So we've talked about role mapping. You know, and this is from the fiscal team's workshop meeting minutes. And it just talks about, basically, it's giving you a kind of a quick little update. Oh, we've received 41 files from, from agencies and, but we're still missing some agencies and we need to face-to-face with, you know, this. And the courts are reluctant to provide the roles. And I'm sitting there thinking, really? I mean, we're talking about, what, 1,000 people in the courts? That's a lot of security access identification that needs to take place and you don't have it. And face-to-face meeting was scheduled for 7/17. And then guess what? The red says it was postponed and canceled. Human resources. Got to talk about that 10 days away. Critical path elements. So what's one of them? Are you ready for testing? Okay, it's, it's starting on 8/1, 8/3, whatever the right date is. What are the keys to that, what are the keys to being ready? The scripts have got to be ready. You can't test unless you have something that tells you what to test. Okay? The data's got to be ready. Now, they need to work on this. They're so worried about trying to get perfection and getting all the data. You don't need all the data to test the system. You need representative data to test the system. So I've tried to talk them into this and hopefully they're working on this so that they don't get killed with trying to be perfect and getting everything because the purpose is to test the system, not to convert for production. That makes sense? So I have some examples in here about the representation. And then the last one is you've got to develop all the pertinent RICE items, particularly interfaces. The area that has the most interfaces is HR. That's the system that's sending things to insurance companies. Okay? There are more insurance companies than there are banks, which is the interfaces from payroll perspective. Okay? So they need to get those three major groupings of things. Okay? So I wanted to quickly show you, this is the foundation for doing a script. This is called a 2B process map. One of these exists for all the major processes in the entire, I mean, I, I can't even imagine how many there are. I haven't counted them. But this is the foundation because you can then see, there are a lot of boxes, they're all numbered here. Well, here is an extract of one of the scripts. I wanted you to see what an example was of a script. So a script had, this particular script, which was number two, that ties to that map that you saw before. This script has nine major tasks, three workflow transitions, and that's this big yellow arrow. That just says, this is a work, this means it's passing from one organization to another or one person to another for review and approval. That's what workflow is all about. There are 31 steps in this thing. That's what somebody had to write. For an average of 4.5 steps per task. Okay? So what I'm trying to say is a script is not inconsequential. It takes time. There are 124 scripts that they have identified that they need to have developed for HR. Okay? The HR, the HR in for resource. The HR, the HR, INFOR Resource was not on site this week. Made me nervous. Okay? I can only presume that that person is off-site cranking on these 124 scripts because that's the person who's supposed to be doing it. Okay? But we also need to remember, the county needs some time to populate the script. The scripts are shells. They say, do this, do this, do this, but what you need is some data. And the only people who can provide the data that say, well, we'd like to add Susie Brown, not Chantel, okay? We need to add Susie Brown. So we literally have to say, okay, and then if I need to have a pretend social security number or whatever the case may be, data has to be provided to populate that script. Okay? Ergo, county personnel need time to do this. This person's better get those things done pretty quick. The other thing that should be happening is this person should be saying, I finished the script. Okay, county person, work it, you know, work it now. They should be getting them now so that they can work it, say, okay, we're done, we're ready, because 10 days from now, somebody's going to say, here's your script, start running the test. Okay? So county staff must gear up and populate the scripts as they are completed. I say that only because you don't have a lot of time. And I know what INFOR will do. I mean, INFOR has a contract based on fixed price per deliverable. Their deliverable is 124 scripts. Please, don't wait until you get all 124 finished. Make sense? Okay?
Okay, so we've heard about the challenge with the HR IST, expected to start shortly. I'm going to see if anyone has any questions. Okay, Councilman Fatt. We just heard that we ramped up a lean department to help us improve product and process efficiencies. How engaged were they in the script writing that lays out the steps and procedures to which, when we ultimately go live, this is going to be the way we're going to do business?
I have no idea.
Would that be the appropriate place that the lean department should be part of that as that script is being written to optimize for the new technology?
A more appropriate timing on that would probably have been when they did the 2B maps.
Okay, yeah, all right. At some point along the way, they should have been in the process to think about new techniques.
You know, how do you get best practices identified? How do you identify improvements? You know, my understanding is that the county relied virtually entirely on the INFOR consultants to provide them with that input and counsel.
The risk is you use old practices, not best practices.
Sure.
And then Jack had mentioned, under the GL, the General Ledger, about the concept of doing potentially more than just this thin layer that was, that is being identified here by these slides. Any feeling in regards to that?
He was talking about cycles, how many times to go through.
No, 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 he was talking about loading it with more components. He was talking about loading with payables, receivables, all the major parts of the General Ledger, at least the way I thought it was explained to us. We're getting, on this part right here, this is going to be just a very bare bones, is what I think the words were that he was talking about on the General Ledger. We're not getting the full General Ledger.
I'm going to cover that. Let me talk about that in just a minute, okay?
Thanks. Please proceed.
Okay, go. One last item on, you know, and I'd mentioned to you, interfaces were important. I have presented to you the list of all the interfaces that are supposed to be ready for integration systems testing. I couldn't find anything about those interfaces in the list of scenarios. I'm not sure I know why. I don't know at this point in time, but they're not there, which makes one wonder, does that mean you're not going to test for the interfaces? And secondly, if you look at this list and the columns, what's actually complete? If you go to the top of this column, it says FDD. That's Functional Design Document. Okay? That's not Technical Design Document, which is the next column, nor is it Code and Unit Test. So I'm kind of nervous because I'm wondering, okay, where do we stand on getting the development of these interfaces ready? Now, it can be later on in integration system testing. It doesn't have to be there day one because you're probably not going to test that interface day one because you've got to have some data in there in order to send it out. But somewhere along the line, you probably need to test those, so I don't know. I'm just raising it and saying it is an open item. Okay, we have a separate work stream now because we get this critical path concern of all these things that need to be done for integration system testing. Well, we've also got fiscal happening, but fiscal now has got a little more time. Okay, they've got a breather. So their plan, integration system testing is the beginning of September. And then if HR brings over the employee data, that's not all, but it's more representative, then we have to recognize that, well, payroll needs it all. So we're going to have to have another pass, bring more data over. That's what we're saying there. Need to expand the data converted for HR to payroll. And then we need to coordinate multiple sources of payment and time data for testing purposes. So I'm going to talk about that in just a moment. This page is an extract from the fiscal team's agenda. I'm just trying to show you the extent of what they're talking about. It's impressive, there's a lot. The first nine or so are all data-related. All the concerns, all the areas they're talking about is, is the data ready? Is the data going to be ready? Where are we with all these data elements? Then we have a whole series of interface-related issues, and that's on the agenda, and that's what they're talking about. And then the last one is a script. Okay? So it's good that they're doing that, and I just want you to be aware that it's not inconsequential, it's not simple. Okay? It starts getting complex when you get into the details. Procurement is part of that now, and so they're cleaning up some data, they've got some missing vendors, they've got this whole issue, they're talking about document storage integration, which is that famous on-base conversation that we had a few months ago. I mean, that's still there. They still have to pass information to on-base. And the good news is, most of their scripts are complete, and the team is actually starting to gather data for testing. So that's good news. Timekeeping. Workforce Management, which is timekeeping, I'm going to keep repeating this, it's got to be there for payroll to work. Workforce Management has delayed its start, we talked about that. I think the good news here is that INFOR recognizes this issue. They've talked about it for several weeks as being in the red condition. They have brought in extra resources. I mean, because one of the things that you can do when you are behind schedule is to ramp up resources. That's how, that's how, one of the ways you catch up. You don't just keep pushing the date later. So they've brought in some additional resources. Good for them. I mean, and good for the county. So I say, last week's INFOR status report moved the status from red to yellow. It's a good move. Critical Path Item. So we need to recognize, the critical path item for workforce management is work rules. And we talked about, I think there was some conversation about that Monday. 37 collective bargaining units. Each one has work rules. Those work rules need to be loaded into the system. So the team is currently going through each critical, collective bargaining unit, and they're literally documenting what those work rules are. And they've done nine out of 37. So they're 25% complete. So time capture is creating some complexity for the system. So what you see in blue are the INFOR modules. That's part of the system. So there's a payroll module, there's the workforce management module, and then there's a module called Employee Self-Service. How many of you are familiar with MyHR? Kind of like that. Okay, that's what's, Employee Self-Service is going to be the place where people enter their time. Okay? So there's different ways of getting information into workforce management, and the place where the work rules reside is in workforce management. That's where the work rules reside. And then that feeds the payroll module, and then the payroll module has output. The payroll module generates checks, the payroll register, your journal entries, and so forth. Okay? So what's all this other stuff? Well, about 4,500 employees currently and in the future enter their time, and they use, they will be using INFOR Employee Self-Service. Okay? About 1,500 employees will, who are currently using clocks, will continue to use clocks, and clocks will collect time. So that's 4,500, 1,500, that's 6,000 employees. That leaves us with about 2,800 employees to figure out. All right? So my understanding is, right now, I mean, there are discussions going on, but right now, the courts, all of the courts, and the Board of Disability, EODD, disability, I can't think of the term, I'm sorry. But those two organizations consist of about 2,000 employees. They currently have their own approach, their own mechanism, their own systems, call them legacy systems, if you will, for providing payroll information to the county. So presumably that will continue, unless there's some change, but right now, that's being discussed, but more than likely that will continue, and then will feed data to the INFOR payroll system, which will then feed information to the General Ledger. Okay, so that's how 2,000 of those will be handled going forward. That leaves about 500, so they're going to fill in spreadsheets, or they may have some interface file that they do today. Whatever they're doing today will probably continue. The message here is that the payroll system that you're paying for as part of the Enterprise Resource Planning solution will not cover about 2,500 employees for payroll input, for time input information. It'll be coming from someplace else. Which means that in the future, you may want to roll INFOR out to those organizations, particularly the two that represent about 2,000 employees. So some additional complexity, we've talked about the collective bargaining units. So just a reminder, here they all are. There's 33 executive agency collective bargaining units, there's four non-executive. So it seems to me like, you know, we ought to be, the team should be tracking. If they've done nine, I'd like to know which nine they've done, and I'd like to know, you know, every week, how many more have you finished? Because they really ought to have all this done before they start integration system testing. They ought to have all this done before September. That gives them five weeks. So here's the example, so you're aware, again, of the kind of detail that's involved. There are five categories across the top here of types of work rules. I didn't identify which contract this is, so we don't, it's just an example. All right? But it gives you the detail, so this is what they're defining, and this is what needs to be translated and literally keyed into workforce management as a work rule. So things like, you know, if you look at this thing and says, oh, you know, if you're calculating overtime, you can't include sick time as a basis for the 40 hours to calculate overtime, that kind of stuff. Okay, and then paternity leave, I mean, you know, those are examples. Okay? So while there are five categories, the number of actual rules that need to be defined are probably in the eight to 10 range, not five, because a couple of these have got multiple sentences, they've got commas and semicolons in the sentence. Okay? So if there are 37 collective bargaining units, the team will be defining approximately 370 rules that need to be established in workforce management. It's not 10, 370. So of the 37, nine have been done already. So here's the new complication. This is the one that Jack brought up to you Monday. Okay? So this complication, I mean, putting payroll in at the end of the year and deferring General Ledger creates this problem of, if I've got payroll issuing journal entries to a financial system, which one am I sending it to? And if I send it to Famous, the current legacy system, I have to, I'm basically creating something that I'm going to throw away in the future. Okay? Or if I pass it on to the new General Ledger, then I have to say, well, okay, what is my system of record? All right? So if you take a look at this chart, I'm trying to show you the three choices of approach, and then there are two choices with regard to what your system of record is going to be. So the system of record is what the auditors look at and say, this is your financials. That's the system of record. Currently, your system of record is Famous. I mean, that's what it's called. That's your system of record. Now, the first opportunity is to say, oh, we can just take INFOR payroll, and we can write a temporary file and send our data to Famous in January, so in January 31, I can get my financials. Okay? And that will go on until I bring up the other system. Second option is, well, INFOR payroll is designed to feed data to the INFOR General Ledger. Makes sense? It already exists. You don't have to write anything special. But if I say Famous is my system of record, I can't, I won't have financials in Famous that are complete unless I get payroll expenses in there, which is, of course, a big piece of your monthly spend, right? So you would have to then write a temporary file from INFOR General Ledger to Famous. Okay? The other, the last approach is, well, we'll say that INFOR is going to be the system of record, that General Ledger will be the system of record, and I'm going to get all these payroll expenses. Great. But I'm still incomplete because I don't have all the purchases, accounts payable, invoices, I don't have that part. Not as big a piece as payroll expenses, but I don't have it. So I've got an incomplete system of record at the end of the month. Therefore, I've got to say, well, then let's just pull the information from Famous, and we'll put it into the INFOR General Ledger, and then the INFOR General Ledger becomes a system of record. The most likely scenario, and I know they're talking about it right now, they're actually talking to their external auditor, and they've already talked to the internal auditor about which one ought to be a system of record. What this does, though, is it changes their plan. Right? This says, oh, instead of putting General Ledger in, in whatever date, middle of the year, 3/31, I guess it was 3/31. So if, instead of putting it in then, I'm going to move it up and put it in in December. Now, all of a sudden, I've got issues with, oh, well, wait a minute, we weren't planning on finishing integration system testing. You know, so you get all these issues. Okay? So it could affect the timing of payroll. Give yourself a little more time, do payroll a little later, then you can, you have enough time to do General Ledger. And you've got to write those temporary files. So it's kind of hanging out there. Okay? So the bottom line is, if we're going to go forward, this thing needs to be done in a timely manner. You probably ought to say, I want to know exactly what impact this has and what it means in the July report. I don't think they can afford to wait until the end of the August report to figure this out. Okay? Because it has too much impact on the rest of the project. Another complication all of this is causing, I call it who's in, who's out. This is a list of, from OBM, of every department in the county. It's a long list. You know, there's county executive agencies, there's all the HHS agencies, there's public works agencies, and then we've got elected offices, and we've got the boards and commissions. and then we got elected offices, and we got the boards and commissions. So you obtained an enterprise-wide solution for the county. Only, is it really enterprise? Everything that you see in the first three columns, to my knowledge and understanding, is in. Everybody's gonna be, all the employees are gonna be using open enrollment, all the employees are gonna be somehow submitting their time, using the system to submit time, they're gonna get paid, they're gonna issue purchase orders, they're gonna receive things. They're in. It starts getting a little squirrely, and I think we, we, we spoke earlier, okay, what about courts and B O D D? Two thousand employees. Are they in or not? Like I, like I said, most likely they're going to not be in. Most likely, they're going to continue using their systems to calculate pay, although they will have their people use open enrollment. It starts getting a little squirrely. Open enrollment, everybody, pay, not so much. Then the next question becomes general ledger, the financial piece. Again, courts, B O D D, big ones, big, big players, have their own system for finance, for general ledger. But so does H H S. H H S is not gonna use the in-for general ledger, they're gonna use the one they have. But they are gonna enter time. So I think it needs to be clarified. Seems to me like the team needs to put something out that specifically by department says, who's gonna be using open enrollment, who's gonna be using employee self-service, who's gonna be using manager self-service, who's gonna be entering purchase, purchase orders by department, right on down the line? So that everybody understands. You know? It needs to be clear. What this does though, it also identifies for you what can be your next, can, probably should be your next phase after this thing finishes. After you've spent your twenty-five million dollars, it doesn't end, we've talked about that before, it doesn't end. What comes next? What comes next? And somebody needs to be planning that and budgeting it and all those kinds of things, because, you know, you're gonna be doing your twenty-twenty-one, you know, budget starting next June or something like that. It's times a year, well, okay, is that a few million dollars or not? You know, I mean, it's not inconsequential. And it certainly requires, remember I showed you meetings with the courts keep getting canceled? It's a big deal. I mean, they need to be in the fold, I mean, somebody needs to be working with them, I mean, those kinds of things. So, you know, when you start thinking that you've got an enterprise solution, I would suggest to you, maybe not. Okay? Not at least at the end of this project.
Okay. Time for, time for questions, and I, I have a couple to start with the, the, the first of the two complications that you, you brought up. Is that a result of, of that the timing of various elements coming on are not ideally synced with each other? Is that basically what the problem is?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's realizing that, you know, I mean, there was a certain sequence that everybody in in-for recommended that they were going to do, and they, they planned on that, and they planned on the various pieces fitting together. And now, when you start adjusting those pieces, you start getting into the, oh, what about? Okay?
And other question is, do you have a timeframe? You, you gave a timeframe on the first one, you said the July report. And do you have a timeframe where you think all the who's in, who's out questions need to be resolved?
I think that that memorandum should be published tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
We, we need to keep people informed and we need to let people understand. I mean, and, and we, we, there's a tendency for some of the folks to talk in generalities, you know, and it's kinda like, oh, well, non-executive agencies are excluded. What, what does that mean? You know, I mean, excluded from what? Because they're not excluded from open enrollment. You know? So that's not, I don't think that's hard to do.
Questions by my colleagues. Vice President Jones.
Ziggy mentioned that the, that the administration wrapped up, ramped up resources for the workforce management. So that particular domino, if all goes well, that domino should be in place and payroll should be, everything should be okay.
If, if they don't hit any hiccups, I agree wholeheartedly, because they have ramped up and they have put team members on there. And they, you know, but like I say, you finish nine out of thirty-seven. Okay. That means that by next Friday, there better be at least eighteen or twenty of them done. Okay? If they're not, then they're obviously gonna fall behind.
Have you identified other areas where they have ramped up resources or should ramp up resources?
Well, I know, I know that they're getting people in procurement, I know H R is adding resources. And I, you know, these are all good things, I don't know the details, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm kind of on the periphery. But, but they are talking about that and they are basically saying, you know, and then there are new faces showing up in the meetings. So I thought, oh, okay, it's a good thing. Yeah.
Thank you. In the R F Q that would have put forth the bidding for this, would we have identified and for the purposes of the bidder, would they have identified the who's in and who's out in the anticipation of the scope of what they're quoting? When they put together a package of this nature?
I haven't looked at it, but the, the answer is probably yes, but there, but it was probably a generic statement. It probably said all executive agencies is what it probably said.
So we would not have clarified that, those words to mean that we would be covering, for example, the open enrollment is, is gonna include all of the employees in the county, because they're all using the same health insurance program?
Yeah, and I have not looked at that original R F P, so I, I really don't know, but, you know, it, it's entirely possible that they probably did talk about open enrollment being available and personnel being available to everybody, I think, you know, but I can't say that that's a fact, I'm just saying they probably did. But what they, what they, what they did, probably did not resolve clearly is who's gonna report time, using time clocks and so forth. I mean, I'm not sure that they did that.
Yeah, those are all devices that have to be linked back to this core system. If, if we're gonna have the court system on a different payroll device or they're gonna be linked to it, it seems to be, it ought to be written in the scope of the R F Q that went, went forward and the, and the bidder has some idea of what they're bidding on. Just, it just seems fairly logical, the scope should have clarity for purposes of knowing. And if it doesn't, this is where unfortunately, the bidders say, that wasn't included. Because you said all executives, and I can point to many places where you're gonna, in county where you're gonna exclude them. So here, I'm gonna exclude them too. So it just seems to me we ought to find out whether or not that is included. All those things are included in the, in the pricing package out there. Otherwise, we're gonna see another bump up in cost.
And that's why I say that, you know, putting out that list of all those agencies and saying in or out, you know, by major function, shouldn't be hard to do.
Now, and once we do that, then we ought to send it back to in-for, do you agree that your bid includes all these folks that we think are in?
Sure.
So that there's no doubt, that we don't get, we don't get an eleventh hour saying, no, 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 that was never a part of our R F Q expectation within the scope. And then you've worked on government projects of this nature in the past. When all is said and done, and you call it an enterprise resource plan, enterprise being the operative word, how many times do you see multiple subsystems left in place to do what are core functions of payroll and benefits and things like that?
I, I have seen scenarios in various governmental institutions where a specific organizational unit that received their funding from a grant end up with their own environment. And so most often, this happens with law enforcement. Okay? They end up, they end up with grants to pay for certain systems. And they basically say, well, that's what the grant's for. And that's what they get, and so you end up with interfaces. So it's, it's hard to be all-inclusive when you have that scenario. But if you don't have that scenario, if you don't have that scenario, there's no reason why courts and B O D D and H H S can't use the in-for systems.
Do you think that they are included in this planning process at this moment? Those groups?
Conversations?
Yes. Are they at the table that you seen?
Can't, can't speak to B O D D, I know H H S is, has, has been involved and it finally is, now has a seat on the executive steering committee. And, which is good. And the, the courts, my understanding is that they are having difficulty establishing meetings, having difficulty with getting the courts to call a spade a spade and react and do one thing or the other. I think the latest, the latest thing with the courts is they have basically said, well, we don't, can't make a decision about using that system, which is an open question that shouldn't, probably never have been asked. But they have said, but they have said that we don't know if we're gonna use that system unless we see a demo. So we're getting into, okay, more dragged out time, right?
So the taxpayers are supporting two systems if they decide they're not part of this independently?
Sure.
Thank you.
But let me say this, whatever you do, whatever you do, and I, Jack and I have had this conversation and I agree with him wholeheartedly. Whatever you do, if you decide that, that the courts are gonna go on this system, do not, do not change your plan now. Decide it, put a box around it, say in or out, and if you're out, okay, great. In twenty nineteen, July, you know, we'll, we'll go with you, we'll, we'll work with you. Or January one, twenty twenty, we'll work with you. Great. If you do it now, then this whole thing stretches out another year, it gets really ugly. Because they'll just start redesign, in-for say, well, we gotta do another change order, you'll go right out the window with twenty-five million.
Fairly logical, we should have at least had those conversations?
Should have the conversations, sure.
Should we have had those conversations?
Oh, you mean a year and a half ago?
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna put a date on it, but sooner than today.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Gallagher, followed by Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Mr. Schron hit on some, all the points that I was concerned with. I, you know, it, it seems to me, and I'm not saying you or the administration, but it seems to me that now with some, I don't know, some sway is being put on the courts as being a problem, and, and I don't see it that way. Because we've had hearings and testimony from yourself and the administration, and the first time the courts have come up is today. So it, it just seems to me, and the more this goes, and my mindset has always been, we're not gonna hit the dates, we're not gonna hit the times, and we're not gonna hit the twenty-five million. And I'm okay with that if in the end, we get a good product. And it just seems more and more clear to me that not stopping the project, stop having these meetings, understanding that we're up against the gun timewise. So I think we need to hear from the administration as far as their discussions with the courts, where that's at, developmental disabilities, where that's at, and the timelines that seemingly were realistic, weren't realistic, they've already been kicked. And I sense we're gonna be kicking a few more. I think maybe a broad discussion with the administration on being real about this thing and doing it right. And I think now's the time to have that discussion.
Ms. Baker.
Right. Thank you. I'm not sure I'm gonna word this correctly, but the Board of Developmental Disability and the courts, that is part of the eighty-five hundred of the employees that we have here. So if the stall is that we're having difficulty blending them in because of the different types of equipment that they're using, that's one thing. But if we have the courts and/or the Board of Disabilities reluctant to join us, then it becomes our fault. Then we have to explain why it is we can't get them on board. Seems like it's two different paths here. One sounds dangerously close to in-for saying that, hey, we're ready to go, we're ready to roll, but we can't get your, your employees to get on board. Is that a concern at all or, or no?
I, I, I don't think that there is, I'm, I'm not aware of any reluctance on the part of those two organizations beyond this is the way we've always done it. You know, and, and, and that's human nature, that's reasonable, there's nothing wrong with that. And, and there's certainly no, no technology or system design issues of, of saying, okay, whatever you've got, bring it in, you know, we'll be able to reformat it and put it in the system. And that's what everybody, as I understand, that that's what everybody has been thinking and planning along the way. It's just that they've never really said it, you know, very clearly, you know? So that's one, one concern. And then, and then the other one is the, these organizations, when, when they, when the question was asked, well, would you consider being included?
Right.
Was the, the timing is not a good point in time to be asking that question, you know? Attorneys don't ask questions if they don't like the answer. You know, and if you say, would you consider, and you're saying it in the last few weeks, months, you're gonna get an answer that, wait a minute.
Right.
Yeah, and, and they may consider it. That's why my reaction is, hey, we always thought that that was the case, let's just be specific about that. List them, say, hey, guys, you got a great system, it's working fine for you. You've always sent us this data, just continue sending us this data, we'll be fine. And oh, by the way, you can be part of phase two. We'll talk about phase two six months before, or whatever the case may be. To me, then I think that's all you really need to do, it's gonna be straightforward. I don't think anybody is saying you gotta be in.
Okay.
You know? Nor has, but, but then again, no, nobody has said specifically, we're, we're going, for you, specifically for you, we are going to use your system the way we always have. And guess what? The impact is, on you is minimal. That's how you sell it, right? It's minimal, you keep doing what you're doing.
Right.
Great. As opposed to, would you consider, you know?
That's what, that language raised my question. When you ask a question like that, be prepared for an open-ended, yeah, rather than, right?
Exactly.
I guess also on your slide twenty-two, you have meeting was postponed, canceled. On who's in, given that you did mark that?
That's, that's the only information that I have, because I, I took that right out of their minutes.
Okay.
You know, I was just simply trying to show, this is what they're dealing with. I mean, so that's, that's all I can tell you.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Tuma.
Thank you, through the chair. So as far as, as the courts go and other departments go, I mean, when it was presented to other departments, were, were they given the option, would you consider being a part? I, I don't understand why the disconnect with, with the courts, I mean, they're part of the county. I mean, you're either in the new system or you're, you're not, and I thought we were all trying to get into the new system. That's what the whole purpose of this E R P thing is.
The only reason that I name those two is because they're significant.
Yeah.
In terms of number of people, that's the reason. I mean, but there's, what, thirty boards and commissions out there? I really don't know if they've all been contacted, or again, I'm back to, this is a simple, there's a simple solution. Just go down and create the list, be specific, and send it to the director of each one of them saying, hey, look, we just wanted to clarify for you.
Right, and, and also I think, I mean, have a, have a, a timeline, a deadline. I mean, we, we obviously need to, and, and as, as Councilman Gallagher said, I mean, it's not necessarily about, you know, sticking to, to a firm deadline here, if it means getting it right. But on the other hand, the longer this goes on, the more likelihood costs are gonna go up. And I mean, that's the direction I'm seeing this going. We've, we've had you up here numerous times. We've had, you know, the administration directors up here numerous times. And it's a bit Groundhog Day-ish to me. You know, it's, you know, we, we keep being told by you, there are deadlines, and guess what? We're not gonna meet these deadlines, and they're, it's getting tighter and tighter, and here we are in August. And I don't see much changing, I mean, there have been some areas, you know, like you said, there are some good, good things happening. And one of the things I do wanna mention is the Public Works, you know, we got to meet with some of the, the director You know, we got to meet with some of the Director of Public Works with Counselman Miller. And they kind of explained what the benefits they potentially could see from this ERP. And I think that's very helpful. I'd like to see some more of that from maybe some other areas, other, other directorships. When you, when you see what they're talking about, you say, well, yeah, maybe this is a very good thing in the long run. But when you, when you, when you have these disconnects, it's tough to see, you know, what's going to happen here in the long run. So I just, I, I don't know if, I, I'd like to see maybe the administration, I know you're sitting in discussing these matters with them and I think it's a good thing, but I'd like to see actually some action taken by some of your suggestions in some of these matters. Because I think if they followed your lead, maybe, I don't know if it's, I don't want to say it's egos, I don't want to say it's, you know, this is the way we've always done it. That idea about this is the way we've always done it in government is not always a good thing. I mean, that, that has proven in the past, it's not always a good thing. Might be the way you've always done it, doesn't necessarily mean it's always a good thing. So I'd like to see some of your suggestions that you're offering that make sense, followed by, by those in charge on behalf of the administration. And next report we have, next time they come in, I mean, Mr. Schron's asked, you know, two or three times, what are the benefits of this? And we keep getting the same response, well, we're waiting to see. And that's, they're working on it. Yeah, I mean, and that is just, at this point in the project, it's unacceptable. It's just unacceptable. And we need more concrete information as to what is expected out of this entire project.
If I may, something that would be helpful, I think, if you, from your perspective, when you, when you talk to the administration regarding benefits. There's a tendency for the administration to try to tie benefits to the schedule. You know, and what I'm trying, what I want to say here is that benefits occur irrespective of the schedule. Once you know what the benefit is and size it, then you can say, well, now I figure out the timing of when I'm going to start seeing it. Yet everybody wants to keep, everybody keeps waiting. Well, we're going to, we're going to rebase line, so we'll, we'll, we'll wait, you know, we want to be sure. Either, I mean, either the benefit is you don't need to do that paperwork or it isn't. And quite frankly, I mean, the way I've always done these things, you do them early, should have done it before the project, but you do them early. Another time when you do them is when you, remember those, that chart that I showed you? That was the, this is the 2B, this is what you're, this is what that process is going to be. You ought to be able to look at one of those boxes and say, that replaced something that was done manually. You ought to be able to do that. And as soon as you say that, you ought to be able to say, well, you know, this is going to save me, you know, 40 hours or 40 reams of paper or whatever the case may be. Right? And that's not happening. I mean, it, it should.
Okay. In, in fairness to the administration, some of the things that Zig has been recommending are finding their way into the way they're implementing the project. Please proceed.
So I'll talk quickly about the change management piece. You know, I just think we need to recognize that this, the schedule change is going to affect the change management team. It's going to affect the, the training team without a doubt. But I also think that we need to make sure that, that we start communicating. Because when you have all these changes, we need to get that out to the team members. And I think I mentioned to you earlier, I just saw a presentation draft that, you know, had the old schedule in it. This doesn't make any sense. You know, everybody's known about that revised schedule for weeks. And that if you're going to communicate to the team, instead of telling them, oh, that's changing, you got to tell them what it is. So. Training plans, the training plans have been stumbling a little bit. And the reason they keep stumbling is because the training people keep waiting for those, remember those roles and responsibilities tables? We needed to, they want those finished. I understand that, you know, but I think there's been some effort to move forward without them, which is reasonable. But that keeps kind of making, slowing things down. Well, how many people are we going to have to train? Who are we going to have to train, those kinds of things? I, in the very beginning, several months ago, I talked about the fact that I looked at the statement of work and there, there were some modules that simply N4 did not indicate that they were going to do the training. And so I keep saying, well, who is? And it still is not clear. Okay? And then, so the same thing with, when we say the training, we got to recognize there are two pieces of the training. It's prepare the material and it's deliver the training. And both, both those pieces get a little confusing, okay? N4 presumably is responsible for most of the material preparation. But again, I'm saying, well, there's a couple of modules that are missing. Who's going to do those? Everybody's kind of circling around that one. Project spend, you've seen this chart, I tried to show you the trend. Next, next month, I'll, I'll extend it out. Presumably I'll have the information, so we'll, we'll be able to see it go out into 2019. But right now, it's just showing you how the money is being spent in 2018. I do find it interesting in terms of what, what these graphs look like. I mean, you'll notice that there were a couple of dips on the blue line. The blue line is actual. And I think we need to recognize that the major component of this project in terms of contract and spend is the N4 contract. So when N4 doesn't get its deliverables approved in a timely manner, and it doesn't get bills out in a timely manner, and, and the county doesn't pay in a timely manner for all these things, you get these dips because all of a sudden it indicates or shows that something isn't getting done. Okay? So things slowed down. And I remember I said, the last quarter, things slowed down. Well, they did. They did. And also notice that we've got two major arrows in there. Information, integrated system testing is starting bang, bang, August, September. All right? Bang, bang. There they are. Watch out. Okay? Costs will rise. So the, some of the things, I think we've already talked about, the budget changes as far as the, the reschedule. But I did want to show you, okay, well, what do we think might happen with the financial position? This is, excuse me, Janine? Could you please? This is the same chart that you saw from the administration of their financial position, right out of the briefing report. What I'm trying to show here is our estimates, my estimates, of what the line, what the impacts on these various line items is going to be with the reschedule. So contracted services are probably going to go up anywhere from $1 to $2 million. The backfill support is probably going to go up a half a million to .8, 800,000. The ERP support, and this is, this is the line item we've talked about time and time again. At some point in time, ERP support becomes part of operations, thank you so much. It becomes part of operations. When it does, that money really should not be in the capital plan. So that number is somewhere in the vicinity of 1 and 1/2 to 2 million. So it's offset. It gives you, you know, gives you some, some room. If you look at then the other, the other line items get into, you know, you talked earlier about that contingency line and so forth. Well, it's going to end up getting spent. What's going to happen? So if you add all these numbers up, it has close to a net effect on the 25 million. And these are approximations, orders of magnitude. But it was, it basically leads me to the path of saying, given what's, what's being planned right now, I feel pretty comfortable, the team feels pretty comfortable that you're going to stay within the 25 million authorization. But to address some of your questions earlier, the, the original budget of this project probably should have been presented and discussed and managed as a $21 million project. It's not, it wasn't a $25 million project six months ago. It was a $21 million project. Now, now it will probably be a $25 million project. So, so here's some of the details. Increases in main sale, you know, that, again, that's your project manager, contractors, and your backfill. You know, these are the numbers, I'm just repeating that they're going to go up. Okay? Increases in N4 represents approximately a 10 to 20% increase in their overall contracts. It'll be 1 to 2 million, that's, that's your 10 to 20%. Yes, my contract will probably go up. Presumably you want me to stick around. Again, developing a bottoms-up summary budget should reveal that the project will stay within the 25 million dollar capital authorization. Now bottoms-up does not mean that you have a line item in there for contingency. It says, this is what we're going to spend. The contingency, if there's anything there, comes below the line, below the line. Major caveat, IT must remove the operating expenses that are included in the ERP support and software charges from the capital budget, which is estimated around $2 million. And you need to make an adjustment in the operating budget. I don't think that's happened yet. I don't think you've received a request for a budget adjustment of a, something in that vicinity for 2019.
We have not.
But that, that's, if it, if that does not happen, you're probably going to squeeze right over 25 million. So recommended considerations, in addition to the team's standard content, so you should continue to get their monthly report, the council should expect the administration to provide the following in the July report. That's two weeks from yesterday, is that right? Finalized project plan and schedule by month through the end of the last project rollout as part of the July 2019 project report finalized. Okay? The estimated spend by month through the end of the last project rollout as part of the July 19 project report. This includes estimates of contract change order impacts. I understand that, that, that the organization is waiting for contract finalization and for change order finalization. I understand that. I see nothing wrong with estimating. Okay, I see nothing wrong with estimating, so, and, and there's nothing wrong with managing to those estimates. And then if you have a contract adjustment, you have a contract adjustment. I understand that. But saying constantly that we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, I, I mean, I think, I think you, you should expect estimates and they should work with them. The punch list for starting HR IST with specific descriptions of completeness. A punch list for HR, you know, we talked earlier about what are the three major pieces, okay? Yea or nay, those interfaces are either done or they're not done. Or when will they be done? And how many of them? Instead of just saying interfaces, I think you ought to, they ought to show you the list. There's nine of them. Let's see the nine. Let me see which ones of those you're actually saying are complete. Same thing with scripts. There's absolutely nothing preventing them from giving you a spreadsheet and saying, here's the summary, got 124 scripts and we've done 65. Can we start IST? Yea or nay, can we start IST? Because the end of July, they have to be able to tell you we're going to start IST for HR. It's the following week. Well, the report will actually come out maybe even the day they start. That you'll have it. So the commitment's got to be there. Make sense? The rest of HR benefits and fiscal benefits estimates, I think they ought to give you something. And, and we all know that somebody might say, well, we're not ready, we're not ready yet because we got to wait for the final, final revised plan. Oh, by the way, we're trying to, we're moving, we're changing the plan because we're moving general ledger from 331 to, to 1231 again. You know, those things will happen, I know they will. But that should not stop benefit estimation. The HR readiness assessment from its third-party assessor with responses to any of the risks that are deemed red. I want to talk about that in just a second and what their report looks like. But the county is paying RSM to do a readiness assessment for every test, for every integration system testing startup. That's what you're paying for. The administration should respond and say, this is what we're going to do about that because you raised a good point. And the question, of course, is, dear RSM, tell us if we're ready. Now, they will focus mainly on, there's a high risk of that happening, therefore, you know, I mean, that's going to be the approach, and I'll show that to you. But the responses need to be there. They need, the administration needs to say, that was a red item and this is what we're going to do about it. The updated budget spreadsheet showing planned monthly spend into 2019. Run it out, because right now it only shows an annual number every month. List of contracts to be amended, including the order of magnitude, necessary adjustment as a monthly amount, and the revised target contract and rate. Got to know whether or not you've covered for Jack. So some additional considerations about the rebase lining. Should, council should expect the administration to provide finalized project plan. I think I've done this. Okay, council, last item, council should expect a summary of critical path items for each major rollout. The timing now, I mean, you're getting ready for IST on HR, you're getting ready for IST for fiscal? Critical. It's time to focus on those. Not too interested in how you're doing on expense management, how you're doing on learning management, how you're doing. Plan them out there, great, keep going. Let's hammer on the path of where we are, what we need to get done.
Okay. Pause for questions. Do we have any? Okay.
The one you just went over, as far as being realistic, as far as the council considerations for July, and you went through, you had seven bullets on that page. Let's assume that maybe they haven't thought about all seven of those bullets. We won't say how many they might have not have thought about. How long would it realistically take them to prepare answers to those, those seven bullets? Assuming that maybe they haven't, don't have them all identified. If they do, great, but I have my doubts that they have all seven of those prepared, ready to go into the July report. Because it looks like a massive one, and I can only envision them saying, wow, you threw these seven points at me. We weren't prepared to give you these, all these schedules.
Most of that exists. Most of that exists. I certainly wouldn't have any problem sitting down with their budget spreadsheet and, and, you know, the, the key is to say, okay, well, here are, here are my contracts. And they, they, in their budget spreadsheet, they list the contracts. I mean, they're there. And they know what the contract amount is and they've got it spread by month. Okay. So now I have a column that says, what's going to happen to this contract? Okay, I'm, I'm going to say, fine, N4 is plus 20%. Right on down, right, down each one of them. And now all I have to do is spread that money out for 2019.
So you don't think we're going to get any pushback on any of these seven requests?
Of course you're going to get it, pushback.
I guess I'm just being practical there. You're not going to get that seven request. Do you have those prioritized?
I can, I can, would you, would you, I mean?
It's, it's three weeks till the August reporters do. They can do them, we're going to, there's going to be a lot of push forward. They're, they're, we're going to ask for all of them and they're going to do them.
Okay.
If, 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 if it's otherwise, the chief of staff will let us know, but, but that's my expectation.
We're asking for a lot of things in, in your requests throughout these 15 pages. And that's also looks like a big one.
We, we asked for, we asked for a lot of things in the June report and they did pretty good?
Yes, they did.
They did, okay, great. On your invoices, you said that the, the only invoice, and you had a dip where the blue line was below the expectation line, and you said that that indicate, is a clear indication that N4 could not be billing because the task had not been completed and therefore?
One piece, yeah.
Yeah. Therefore, the invoice was not submitted.
Right.
Those of us up here have some seven years' worth of history of not necessarily getting invoices in a timely manner, even though projects had been completed. Is there any risk that N4 has already completed these things and we're sitting on any of those invoices?
INFOR, I know, has moved forward on various deliverables. They have moved forward on ensuing or following deliverables based on a deliverable that they have been unable to get a formal approval on, and therefore, they have been unable to invoice for it. And they have moved on. I mean, so that's, that's good partnering, is what that is. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not saying INFOR hasn't sent us an invoice. But there's a, there's a lot of us up here who have, who are always asked for expedited payments and waiver of two-meeting suspensions, and just go down the list for...
You know, to my knowledge, I mean, certainly, certainly someone like Jim Hay can probably give you those statistics and that information. But, but to my knowledge, they are fairly timely in getting their invoices to the county as soon as they get an approval.
That's not my question.
Okay. Then help me, help me understand your question.
The question is not, has not finalized processing it because they're sitting not okaying it. And that these numbers are not necessarily correct as far as what we've actually been billed.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I mean, in other words, the only numbers I've got is what's presented to me in a spreadsheet by the county of their spend. In other words, what they've paid money for, what, you know, their spend, that's what that blue line is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Ms. Baker.
Thank you. I think that makes a good point. What's yet to be paid by work finished versus what we have paid could be two different numbers. And that's, and I've had some experience in that, too. And, yeah, and in my short time here. But that's not my question, but I agree with that. Could be a gray area concern.
And, you know, that's, that's in essence a way of you seeing what your exposure is going down the road, right?
Exactly, right.
And, you know, my last client, they were six months in arrears.
Wow.
Okay? And, but, but what we worked out is that the spreadsheet that the client was preparing was based off of estimated billings, because we tracked hours and rates and all that kind of stuff of the consultants. So we did estimated billings. And so we were, we were able to say, this is your exposure. You now know when, where the spending actually, you know, where you're incurring the cost.
Right.
It's just not necessarily where you've spent it.
But we don't have that at this point.
To my knowledge, well, my, to my knowledge, there are some of those available. In other words, I've heard, you know, people talk about the fact that, yeah, we've got a bunch of invoices, but we haven't paid them yet. Okay? Therefore, they're not included. So there's a possibility there's some, I have no idea how much or how many.
Okay. But my question was, I was just supporting Councilman Schran's concern. And I may stand alone on this, and maybe in time I'll get closer to it. But the 1.5 to 2 million in operations that we're backing out, seems to me that that should be part of the capital plan, because we have to have some period of time of operations in order to launch this whole project. And to back that out and say that, no, that's something different than the actual capital, seems like a shell game to me, that if we were at a 21 million, and you add another couple million to get it launched, which means operations, and maybe another couple of million for contingencies for things that are uncertain, gets you to the 25. And so I'm, you know, I may change as I, we go down the road. But right now, it seems like that's an easy answer to getting us to the 25 by backing out the operations that really are needed in order for us to launch, and should, I think, be part of the 25 million.
Probably what needs to happen is, is that the team needs to specify that in a little more detail. And the reason I say that is, you've got an awful lot of overlapping going on. Okay? So the question becomes, how much time do you need to apply for launching work orders? Okay? You've had them in production for quite a while now. So, for several months. So when you get to the end of September, you say, fine, I'm done. What does launch mean for work orders? Another month? For another month of one systems analyst, you know? Okay. But the point is, is that that systems analyst, after that month, for the rest of '18 and the rest of 2019, is that really part of, we got to implement the system? It isn't. I mean, it's, it's support work, it's operations work, it's day-to-day, and that time should be literally said, okay, it goes over here. Same thing with the others. When do they actually launch? How much time do you need to have those people? But that's building it up, that's building up bottom up, right? That's saying, how many people do I have to have that are going to be supporting this launch, in your words, for one month or two months or three months, whatever the number is. Okay?
Right.
And then I'm done. I mean, that's the budget. That's what I'm going to spend.
I'm not convinced that that's defined. That's my issue. Is I don't think, I certainly understand the operational piece once we're up and running and we're on our way. But I think there is a reasonable amount of time that should have been expected for us to have some operational needs before we actually launch the project, and then we're on our way. And I'm not sure if that 1.5 to 2 million, where are we in that? Are we just making it convenient to say that that's part of the operations, and it's easy to take that out and get us to the 25? Or are we kind of playing some numbers here and playing a bit of a shell game in order to get us there and call it operations?
The way I estimated it originally was from 331, 19, to the end of the year, because they had people in there throughout the end of the year. Literally, IT had people in there for the end of the year. And that was nine months of what? System supposedly was all done at that point in time. Now you've got some changes because some things are sticking out a little further. You bet.
Okay. Council President.
Just a comment. I know, I assume Mr. Chairman, we're wrapping up this, the presentation. I know that all of this is painful for us. It's, I'm sure it's painful for the administration. But I just want to say the obvious, I guess, that really appreciate the help that you're, that you're giving us and giving the county. I can't imagine how this council would be able to provide any kind of sane oversight to a project this scale without this kind of independent expertise to be available to us. So it's absolutely critical. And as difficult as this is, everybody's just going to have to live with it and work together and get through this thing, and be honest about it, and not avoid bad news, because we can't do anything about bad news until we, you know, know about it and know what to do or buy into what needs to be done, if that's the case. And so I'm very pleased that we are, I think, providing the best oversight that we can. And again, I want to commend the chair for your work.
Thank you very much. And I agree totally with the sentiments about ZIG's contribution to this project, which is immeasurable. We're going to do just one more thing today. We're going to have you take a few minutes and tell us about how to read RSM reports. That's important. That's the next item on the agenda. Then, then we're going to study the conclusions on our own so that we can wrap this up and have a little bit of a break.
Mr. Chair? Can I just do one thing before ZIG goes, before we conclude? Just quick, I just want to put this out, if I can. Every time I sit here and hear what ZIG says, I don't get a response from the administration about the points he brings up. So I want you to put that on the agenda for next time about how we can coordinate this discussion, because it's just, seems disconnected. So that's all. I'd like to have interactional response somehow to what's happening so we can start working together, because I'm not seeing that in front of us.
Okay. Good point. Okay. RSM reports.
Okay. So, so we're paying RSM for advice and counsel. I'm just showing you here on this next page, this is an extract from the project team's 2019 monthly report for this prior month. And obviously, you can't read it. That's not the intent. It's to show you that it exists, that they, that they know they're getting it, they are receiving these reports, and that basically they are structured in a fashion where they give you a description of what the item is or the issue is. Then they have a whole series of risk factors, and they're listed on the next page. I've kind of made this a little larger so you can see that. And so you've got these risk factors across the top that are colored green, blue, orange, gray, and purple. Those are the risk factors. And they look at each item, and then they consider these risk factors. And then you'll see over on the right-hand side, you know, what they do with the numbers. Because when I first saw this, I said, where's the legend? How do you read this? Well, I've found out, got the numbers. You know, so any number that's one or two says that it's green, and that's a low-impact risk. So you can, basically, it's information, great, move on. Number three, anywhere you see in that spreadsheet means that it's medium, and it's moderate impact. Monitor it, pay attention. But you don't have to overreact. Okay? Four and five is red. It's high impact, which is why I said earlier, if you see something that's red, if they see something from RSM that's red, they need to react. They need to say, what am I going to do to mitigate this? And they need to tell someone. Specifically, they need to respond to RSM, and they need to respond to the executive steering committee, saying, we are doing the following to address this. Here's the example. I made this a little bit larger so you can read it. This was red. Okay? This one, this one was red in the example that was provided to you, because it had a five in there. The last sentence says, we also noted that changes are being made directly to the production environment. That's a no-no. I mean, clearly, they, if you make changes without testing them in the production environment, you have absolutely no idea whether or not you are causing a serious problem in your system, which is why you do that. That's the reason why you say, no changes in production environment, no access by programmers in the production environment. So they said it was red. So the result is a five under the quality risk factor and a five under the likelihood risk factor. That's what was in that document. Thus, it is very high likelihood that the quality of the resulting solution will be affected by the lack of consistently tracking defects, and that some unwanted changes may be made in the production environment. That's what they said. Okay? The team should be specifically addressing all fours and fives with documented responses to the executive steering committee and summarizing in each monthly report to the council. So you're on top of it.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to look at the conclusions on our own. We appreciate your report very much. There being no further business, this committee of the hall stands adjourned. Thank you very much for everybody's interest and attention.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.